Good morning. Welcome to the May 15th County Board Meeting. We're going to start this morning with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, will you please start the agenda?
A copy of the rest of the Open Meetings Act is located on the wall to the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at Lancaster County, ne.gov. Agenda on one of minutes, so approval of minutes to the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, May 8th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries two yes, one abstention. Next is approval of amendments to the Department Budget Meeting held on Tuesday, May 8th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Abstain.
Motion carries two yes, one abstention. Next is number two, Claims. Approval of all claims processed through May 15th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number three is a public hearing. Amusement license application from Jan and Darryl Hauser doing business at Pine Creek Farms to hold a craft fair on September 28th and 29th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 11-505 North 14th Street, Raymond, Nebraska.
All right, we will open the public hearing on this amusement license application. Good morning.
Good morning.
And it's a public hearing, so the clerk will want to swear you in.
Do you want to raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear affirming that the testimony about the gave us the truth and nothing but the truth?
You do.
Hi. Hi, I'm Jan Hauser, and I'm from Raymond. Just kind of at the top of the hill, it's Lincoln, and at the bottom of the hill, it's Raymond. So, and I've been before the board before for the Raymond United Methodist Church for a swap meet, and we discontinued that for several years. And now my son and I want to start an event center, and we will call it Pine Creek Farm. We have had our 40 acres redone. I mean, it has a whole new look to it out front. So, what we would like to do is have an event center on September 28th and 29th, excuse me, 29th and 30th from 9:00 to 5:00. We'll have craft booths for rustic things, craft of all kinds, et cetera. That way, there will be no alcohol, there will be no firearms, no pornography of any type at all that we'll allow on that. We will not allow any street parking on 14th Street. We have plenty of parking for that. And I saw in one of the amendments that I got sent out to me that we needed to have digital signs. We do have those through TrafficCon, and we will have people directing traffic in and out. And if you're familiar with looking at the map of my 40 acres, you can circle in and circle out. There's nobody needing to back out or anything. You can just circle around the drive and come straight through.
All right. Any questions? Bill?
I heard you say that the dates for this would be...
September 29th and 30th.
Our agenda here says 28th through 29th. Now, it's not a big issue, but...
Okay.
I just was curious as to who is right.
And I could be wrong. But it's a, it's a, if I wrote that down wrong, I apologize. It is a Friday, it is a Saturday and a Sunday.
Any other questions? So, Saturday, Sunday is the 29th and 30th, but the application said 28th to 29th.
Then that was my error.
Okay. So, I don't know if we need to adjust. Do I need to ask a lawyer if we need to make an amendment to the application?
We don't have any lawyers here, do we?
Yeah, I would say we need to... So, Saturday and Sunday, which would be September 29th and 30th? All right. Any other questions?
The only other thing I might add, I did talk to the Raymond Fire Department, and they, if something would happen there, Shane has a rescue plan to come through there, and they have been there to just look over my property. It's pretty easy in and out. I just thought that that was a smart thing to do for this day and age.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to testify on this application? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing, and I'll ask the clerk to move on to the related item. Thank you.
This is number four, New Business. Amusement license application from Jan and Darryl Hauser doing business at Pine Creek Farm to hold a craft fair on September 28th and 29th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 11-505 North 14th Street, Raymond, Nebraska.
Ms. Holloway?
We don't have the insurance yet, so approval, we'd ask that approval wait to be contingent on the insurance.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I move approval of this contingent upon two aspects. One is that we have the insurance taken care of, and then the second is that the dates be amended to reflect 29th and 30th of September.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
I would come back and state that my insurance is through Inspro Insurance. That is within, I think Kelly knows that. So, that's just pending the day, so I didn't have to pay for that until this was approved.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. B is a settlement between Ashley Amon and Lancaster County in an amount of $100,000 regarding docket 216, number 1627, in the Nebraska Workers' Compensation Court.
Move approval of the settlement?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. C is Resolution in Matter of Recommitting to the Stepping Up Initiative to Reduce the Number of People with Mental Illness in Jails.
Move approval.
Oh, we have somebody to talk.
You want to not make your motion and make it later? Or do you want to make a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and now we'll hear from Kim and Brad.
Good morning.
If you want to endorse this motion, then we'll be upset with you.
I just have a statement I would like to read about the work that's been done towards the stepping up initiative since it was originally passed in 2015. Since the Lancaster County Stepping Up Resolution of 2015, Community Corrections continues to work to identify and improve programming at the pretrial intercept of the criminal justice system. Specifically, Community Corrections has been working closely with the city and county prosecutors offices to move our mental health jail diversion program into an official diversion program status. Where mental health jail diversion previously focused on individuals in the jail with mental health diagnoses, we are subsequently super, and were subsequently supervised on pretrial release status, we are now able to offer a true diversion program where we identify eligible candidates by reviewing prosecutor's tickets filed by law enforcement from booking jail information and from defense counsel referral. Understanding that mental health issues may be the driver of behaviors that bring individuals in contact with the criminal justice system, requirements for mental health diversion are adapted to accommodate the unique circumstances these individuals face. With the mental health diversion program in place, Community Corrections continues to offer mental health case management support for individuals on pretrial release awaiting trial. Addressing the mental health needs of all individuals involved in the programs within the Department of Community Corrections is a priority, and we are dedicated to using evidence-based practices in carrying out screening and supervision strategies. This past year, we added a risk assess, we added risk needs assessments, trauma screening tools, and the adverse childhood screening instrument to all screenings completed on individuals who qualify for Community Corrections programming. In September 2017, Lancaster County was the recipient of a Bureau of Justice Assistance Second Chance Grant where steps are being taken to enhance the sentence conversion program with a focus on 18- to 25-year-olds with behavioral health diagnoses who have been sentenced to nine to 12 months in jail. The goal is to reduce the reincarceration rate of this population. The sequential intercept mapping workshop sponsored by a grant from Samsa Gaines Center is scheduled for June 12th and 13th, where key players in the criminal justice and behavioral health systems have been invited to examine local resource gaps, explore opportunities at each of the criminal justice intercept points, and identify where alternative justice and behavioral health interventions could be employed. The current stepping up initiative is expanding its push for counties to collect data on the numbers of people in jail who have mental illness. The Department of Community Corrections has added, or the Department of Corrections, sorry, Brad, has added the mental health screening tool to their booking procedure. The jail will gather and report quarterly at the Justice Council meeting, baseline and follow-up data on the numbers of mentally ill individuals in our jail. We will be watching to determine if there is a decline in the number, as well as a decline in the length of stay for those with mental illness who are lodged in our jails.
Thank you. Any questions for Kim? Right. Brad?
She covered basically all the details. I'm, I'm just here to show support for what she does for our department. So, as, as you guys know, we, I mean, we deal with a lot of mentally ill folks, and the, you know, the 18, the 24-year-old group is a very difficult group to deal with, too, and she's really, you know, I think, taken a strong interest in trying to help, help out my department with diverting those folks and finding ways to reduce their recidivism. So, I strongly look forward to working with her in the future and trying to deal with some of the problems that we're encountering, so.
Okay.
It's been a great partnership. Brad's been very, very easy to work with, and we've been making a lot of changes, I think, that are going to have some positive outcomes, so.
And I just really wanted to compliment both of you on how well you do work together. And, you know, and the many different programs that have been brought forward to reduce the number of mentally ill people in the, in the jails. I also wanted to bring up the fact of the Justice Council, you know, and this is one of the things that came out. Wasn't there a conference that you all went to where it was? How did that just, yeah, how did that come?
Well, I think one of the things we recognized was the lack of communication we had between our systems and how we could use the justice system as a, as a vehicle to improve communication, not just within the criminal justice system, but we made a special effort to make sure that we have behavioral health providers participating in those conversations so that we know where they're at, and they know where we're at, and we can, you know, we'll work better together that way, so.
And I think, you know, that one of the things with the Justice Council, we had Commissioners Wilchin and Commissioner Shore involved in that, Councilwoman Cindy Lamb, all of these people, you folks, and then other ones from the law enforcement and so forth. It is really a very large group, and so there's been a great deal of emphasis upon how to reduce the incidence of people in our jails who have mentally ill, so.
Yeah, absolutely. At the front end, and, and the back end is necessary as well. We need to get them out as soon as possible to make sure we don't disrupt any treatment that they've been receiving or to get them connected as soon as possible, so.
And I would like to emphasize to the viewers that this is a national program, and it's one that has been really brought forward by the National Association of County Officials.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
As a matter of recommitting to the stepping up initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails initiative. Whereas Lancaster County Board of Commissioners recognizes that counties routinely provide treatment services to the estimated 2 million adults with serious mental illness booked into local jails each year, and whereas prevalence rates of serious mental illness in jails are three to six times higher than for the general population, and almost three-quarters of adults with serious mental illness in jails have co-occurring substance abuse disorders, and whereas jailed adults with mental illness tend to stay longer in jail and upon release are at a higher risk of recidivism than adults without a mental health condition, and whereas county jails spend two to three times more on adults with mental illness that require interventions compared to adults with these treatment, without these treatment needs, and whereas without the appropriate treatment services and intervention, adults with mental illness are at risk of continuing to cycle through the criminal justice system. And whereas the Lancaster County Community Corrections Department has established a number of programs to help reduce the number of mentally ill persons in the county jail, including the mental health diversion program, which works with those individuals prebooking to divert those with a serious mental illness or co-occurring substance abuse from incarceration and prosecution. The Veterans Diversion Program, which works with veterans suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder. Routine screening of all individuals in custody displaying serious mental health symptoms for pretrial release to receive mental health services. And a trauma screening program for all adult drug court participants and persons in jail being considered for supervision by Community Corrections. And whereas Lancaster County Corrections has licensed mental health practitioners on site and screens and identifies anyone with mental health symptoms at booking and during their incarceration, and is now implementing the mental health jail screening instrument as part of the booking process for every person lodged into jail. And whereas the Lancaster County Attorney's Office supports and assists with programs to help reduce the number of individuals in the county's jails who are affected by mental illness, including Lancaster County Mental Health Board hearings and alternatives to judicial criminal prosecution through the Mental Health Diversion Program, the Veterans Diversion Program, and Adult Drug Court, and whereas through the stepping up initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails initiative, the National Association of Counties, the Council of State Government Justice Center, and American Psychiatric Foundation are encouraging public, private, and nonprofit partners to explore strategies and access resources to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails. Now therefore be resolved by the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners that the Board supports the stepping up initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails in order to reduce the number of people with mental illness in Lancaster County Corrections and remains committed to sharing its experience with other counties in Nebraska and across the country dated this 15th day of May, 2018.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Four D is Joint Budget Committee Funding Recommendations for 2018 and 2019.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle, Director of Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. Just to give you a background on the Joint Budget Committee, these are county and city funds that are combined with the intent and the goal of feeding this funding out to the community to help our most vulnerable population. And when we look at the overall role and the cost of government because of services in the private sector and the money that they're able to leverage from donations partnered with our money, we're able to serve a larger number of people. It's a very, very smart relationship. This also, I want to commend this Board. This is the first time in over a decade that these agencies have seen a slight increase rather than a decrease. And the amount of funding that is available now to serve entities that provide services, for example, the Center for People in Need, the number of homeless people, the number of people that need food that they're able to reach. And the Community Action Partnership also saw an increase that they have not been able to see before ever, really, so. And the Joint Budget Committee, grants are reviewed, applications are reviewed. We have a partnership with the United Way. And then the ultimate funding decision is based upon a committee of two county board members, two city council members, and then a representative from the county commissioner's office and from the mayor's office.
Any questions for Sarah?
I think you do a great job managing it. Thank you.
I would just comment that we, as a Board, have allocated an additional $300,000 to these efforts over the last two years, and I think that what we're trying to do is reach a good level to make sure that these agencies that are providing these critical services are able to do that in a way so that we can get to the point where a regular increase that makes sense for them to address salary increases, health insurance, everything that any organization needs to address will make sense going forward in the future.
I guess it's appropriate to note that we provide more than, 100% more than the city does. Maybe we ought to talk to them about it up in the ante a bit.
I would note that we proposed a $100,000 increase over last year's budget to facilitate the process of these recommendations, and the mayor's office agreed to project a 3% increase on their part. And we still have a chance to talk to them about the second year of this funding going forward.
And so I have, as you know, too, I would just add that I have a budget with the city and with the county, and when I meet with the mayor to go over my city budget, I bring this up every year, and this year has been one of the years that he was very supportive of this because traditionally, they've seen a decrease on the county side, while the city has remained consistent with what they've funded. So, now that we're starting to increase, they're more, I think, like Commissioner Brinkman said, they're more willing to look at that.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. E is a Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund Recommendations for 2018, 2019.
Okay. And juvenile justice prevention funds are county funds. This goes to the community to provide services to juveniles who are at risk of becoming involved in the juvenile justice system or already at that early stage in the juvenile justice system. The initial level of funding from this is decided by a committee that has representatives from the county attorney's office, the public defender's office, juvenile probation, the youth detention center. We have LPD, Lincoln Police Department on there. Somebody from Lincoln Public Schools is on there, and then I sit on there as well. So, it's an array of different stakeholders within the juvenile justice field. I will point out, too, that some of these services that you see are funded are services that you've heard about recently, probably more so than ever. We provide funding for different behavioral health programs within the school to help support the initiatives that we have in place with our partnership with the school, and then just different pro-social activities in the community that keep our kids busy during those high-risk times that we know of.
Yes, Bill?
I have a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
I move that we approve the allocation recommended for the Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund.
May I second that?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. F is our recommendations from the County Personnel Policy Board to create the classification of senior field administrator with a proposed pay grade of $84,331.52 up to $108,020.64, and to revise the classification of investigator.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. The Personnel Policy Board advances two classifications for your consideration. The first are merely revisions to the investigator, which allows the county attorney to use this classification as well in civil proceedings and matters. Previously was used by the, the public defender for criminal cases, so minor word changes. The second is a new classification done at the request of the County Assessor's Office, Chief Deputy Rob Ogden, which allows Mr. Ogden to put in place the necessary deputy after elections. I'll let Mr. Ogden explain that.
Okay. This is a position that would allow us to get the individual that I would like to be my chief field deputy to have three months this fourth quarter of this year to become acclimated to our software systems, to our personnel policies, to the office functions. So, come January, when we have informal hearings, he'll be up to speed, and it will be a good benefit for the county. Having been 28 years that Norm's been in office, we really haven't had the situation where I currently hold the position I need to appoint at that time, and I would prefer to have somebody that has some experience within the office. They're totally qualified as far as the position itself.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Okay, move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. G is a mini-grant application award with the Nebraska Department of Transportation Highway Safety Office in the amount of $1,679 for selective overtime enforcement by Lancaster County Sheriff's Office related to alcohol compliance checks at rural establishments.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. H are agreements with vowing for the care and maintenance of abandoned and neglected cemeteries. The cost of county is $50 per mowing, not to exceed $200 per year per contract. This includes Clark Leesfeldt for Deet Cemetery, Terry Breiley for Evangelical Cemetery, and Dave Miller for the Jordan Cemetery.
Mr. Meyer?
Good morning. Brent Meyer, Lancaster County Weed Control. So, we are in charge of the six abandoned cemeteries that the county has out there. So, you've got three of the contracts here before you this morning. The Poor Farm, which is not a mowed cemetery, which is just a grass prairie. We don't do any maintenance, other than our staff just treats that herb with herbicide in the fall. And then we'll have a couple more for Uphoff and Highlands coming to you in the next couple of weeks, I hope, because we'd like to get a mowed before Memorial Day, so. We call these, we, we do pay these folks, but I call them volunteers. I'm really grateful for their generosity to manage these cemeteries. There's been some neat programs, and I don't know, just for the public's benefit. You know, Deet Cemetery, when I took over this seven years ago, was just a prairie with tombstones in it. It got mowed once a year before Memorial Days were required by law. So, the Boy Scouts down there took it upon them as a project to do that and take that cemetery, and it's a, it's a nice, really nice-looking cemetery today. They've straightened the headstones in there, they've put up new fencing around there. And unfortunately, with the way the world is today, we, Boy Scouts are the younger generation which can't operate mowers or string trimmers below 18 years of age. So, the adults are really the ones doing the work, and the Boy Scouts are helping out with the cleaning and stuff. So, it's a great partnership with, with all these folks, and I appreciate them, and I'd ask for your support.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Four I is an agreement with Lincoln Tree Service for the trimming, removal, and general maintenance of trees at the abandoned and neglected cemeteries as listed in Attachment A. There is no cost to the county.
Move approval.
Second.
And I just want to speak on that, too. Lincoln Tree Service has volunteered their services at no cost to the county, and prior to their commitment to do that, we actually paid $900 to get one tree taken down at Jordan Cemetery. So, that's a huge benefit to the county. It's just a part of their way of giving back to the community.
How many years have they been doing this? They've done it for quite a few, I think.
They're probably in about their fourth year. They kind of came on just by reading an article in the paper about this and wanted to give back to the community. And if you ever see them out there doing it, they got guys hanging from ropes all over the trees and taking out the limbs and preserving the tombstones. You know, Jordan Cemetery has a Civil War veteran's tombstone in it. So, we want to protect those tombstones, and we appreciate their support doing that, so, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. J is an licensing agreement with Swank Motion Pictures, Inc. for showing DVD movies at the Youth Services Center. The county will pay $449.10 for the license. Term of the agreement is July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. K is an interlocal agreement with Dixon County for the safekeeping, care, and sustenance of pre-educated juveniles at the Youth Services Center. Lancaster County will be reimbursed at the rate of $276 per juvenile per day.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Four L is Administrative Services Agreement Amendment and Plan Criteria Guidelines for Outsourcing Services with Prudential Retirement Insurance and Annuity Company for the county's 457B Deferred Compensation Program for the purpose of adding a contributor and accelerator effective June 1st, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. M is Change Order Number Two to County Contract C-18-11 with Michael Hand Contracting, Inc. M is change order number two to County Contract C-18-11 with Mecole Hand Contracting, Inc. for relocation of Lancaster County Emergency Management. The change order decreases the contract amount by $1,573 for a new contract sum of
Move approval. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, Ms. Peterson.
Well, we like change orders that actually reduce the overall cost to the budget, so this is just to take some specification for some cast iron pipe and we're able to put PVC pipe in. Instead, the architect has signed off on it, I'm asking for your approval.
Great, any other questions or discussion?
I just wanted to make one, it is really nice to have a decrease.
This is my second decrease for these projects, but we're just through demolition, so I don't like to be not optimistic, but yes, I like to see these two.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anything else? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
Four N is a resolution authorizing installation of a traffic control device, authorizing installation of a traffic control device in Lancaster County.
Pam Deming, Lancaster County Engineer, so I've set my exhibit on the screen, and today we are asking for a driveway ahead sign to go on 148th Street. We did study the site distance, and it does meet the criteria to have a sign.
All right.
Move approval.
Second.
Bill?
Is this one of those, this is North 48th?
Yes, it is, it is North 48th between O and Holdridge.
148.
148, sorry about that.
All right, the problem area though is really south of there.
You know, the whole corridor is becoming a challenge with the traffic counts of over 5,000 a day. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. O is a recommendation from the purchasing department and the county engineer to award a contract to Yost Excavating, Inc. for cover maintenance. The cost to county is $611,915.82.
Pam Deming, Lancaster County Engineer, this is our second pipe contract of the year, so we had a first pipe that were kind of our easier pipes. These are our pipes that are a little more complex. This project also came in about $200,000 under the engineer's estimate, so we're excited about that, and with that, I would like to recommend Yost Excavating for the second, or what we're calling Phase Two of the county pipes this year.
Move approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions, discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Four P is a contract with Vulcan Signs using the City of Lincoln Contract Number 1762 to provide traffic control and custom signs. Term of the contract is upon execution through March 20th, 2019. Pricing will be pursuant to the city's contract, the cost to county is not to exceed $45,000.
Pam Deming, Lancaster County Engineer, so this is a little bit different sign contract than I've brought to you before. This will be making pre-printed signs, so we will be ordering a year's supply of pre-printed signs, whether that be stop signs or speed limit signs, or whatever our needs are, and we're doing this because we've determined that it is cheaper than fabricating them in our shop. And so Commissioner Brinkman recently attended a day-long class on the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which I commend her to because even for engineers, that's a very long, dry class. But now that you know how much science goes into these signs and how much care is taken on their placement, I think that you know more about signs, so, thank you.
I would entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second has been made. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Q is an agreement with Constructors, Inc. on behalf of the Lancaster County Engineer to provide asphalt paving and resurfacing for Project 18-1. The cost to county is not to exceed $4,571,818.89.
Pam Deming, Lancaster County Engineer, you previously approved the award of this contract, and this is actually the contract coming back signed. This is our annual asphalt contract, which will include new paving for the two miles on 54th Street from Roca Road into Hickman, and then various miles of asphalt overlay around the county.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. R is an agreement with the state and Nebraska Department of Transportation to establish terms upon which the state will assist the county in obtaining federal approval and funds for a safety improvement project on Saltillo Road from South 27th Street to South 68th Street. The county share of the total project cost is estimated to be $1,541,039. The agreement is effective upon execution by the state.
Pam Deming, Lancaster County Engineer, so this is the program agreement for Saltillo between, from approximately 25th Street to 68th Street. We are excited to get the program agreement. I may remind the board that during the budget hearing last week, I talked about that we had the money set aside for this with the Nebraska Department of Roads Highway Buyback Fund. So for the next budget year, we are proposing to pay for the $750,000 estimated engineering expenses, and then in following years, we'll still have that money set aside for the remaining $750,000 that we're going to have to pay.
Move approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? I just want to note that like the recommendations we made for the JBC and the JJPF funds today, entering this agreement with the state is like us making a budgetary decision in that we need to actually allocate these funds, earmark them for this project, and also note that that is all of the funds that we have in the Highway Buyback Fund, which means that once we do this project, we have to start building those up again for other projects in the county. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Four S is a grant contract with City of Lincoln in the amount of $39,955 for improved community response to sexual assault and legal advocacy relating to protection orders and immigrants in Lancaster County program. Funding is from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Violence Against Women under the Violence Act against Women Act. The contract period is October 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2019.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Director of Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. This is a contract with the Lincoln Police Department to fund a victim advocate that specializes in helping victims fill out protection orders, restraining orders, and then also helps when there are situations of domestic violence in the community, they respond when the police are there, and then follow up to.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. T is an addendum to County Contract C-18-164 of the City of Lincoln for the improved community response to sexual assault and legal advocacy relating to protection orders and immigrants in Lancaster County program. The addendum replaces language in Section 16, excuse me, Section 19A and B of the contract as noted.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next are consent items. Amendment to County Contract C-16-10 with Nebraska Secretary of State Records Management Vision to provide microfilm, microfilming imaging services. The amendment renews agreement from April 1st, 2018 through March 31st, 2019. A right-of-way contract between Mary and David Montague, North 27th Street, and Agnew Road in the amount of $1,630. Records and information management's monthly report for April 2018. Setting the following public hearings, Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building for the purpose of increasing appropriations for the Workers' Compensation Loss Fund, Mental Health Fund, and Property Management Fund. Tuesday, May 29th, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building regarding the request to remove the restriction disallowing the sale of single cans and/or bottles of beer or malt liquor of less than 32 ounces for Shoemaker South Truck Stop at 1200 Saltillo Road, Roca, Nebraska.
Move approval of the consent items.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number six is public comment, those wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on agenda may do so at this time.
All right, seeing no members of the public, let's move on to announcements.
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including department budget hearings, on Thursday, May 17th, 2018, at 8:30 a.m. in the Bell Luxor Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold department budget hearings on Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018, at 9:30 a.m. immediately following Lancaster County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting in the Bell Luxor Studio of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commission@lancaster.inny.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln.inny.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
All right, we will now, we have now adjourned the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, and we'll move on to the County Board of Equalization meeting. Mr. Clerk, please start the agenda.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall of the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.inny.gov. Also in attendance this morning is Scott Gaines from the County Assessor's Office. Agenda item 100 minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, May 8th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.